Can you guys hear us?
Are we live? Can you guys hear us, see us? Is everything working on that end? Yes, awesome. Alright.
Okay, cool.
Alright, how's everyone doing? Just to get things started, how about you drop in the chat? You know, on a one through five scale, how are you feeling about the AP Chemistry exam this year? Okay, alright. Two, five. A lot of twos, okay. I mean, that's what we're here for. We're here to answer your questions and make sure you can get those twos up to fours and fives. Hey, Rosemary is here! Alright. So, we're just here today to answer your questions, whether it's content about the exam, anything of that sort, just to make sure that your confidence can be up going into the exam next week. So yeah. If you want to pull up the slides that you have, Emily?
Yep. Oh, hi, my name's Emily.
Sorry.
This is... Show your screen. Okay, do you see the slides?
Yeah, everything's working. We're good.
Okay, cool. Welcome to AP Chem Student Q&amp;A Session. So... This is a screen calendar. We have all the days here. Oh. So... Like Dylan said before, put any of your questions in the Ask Question tab. And then if we don't have any questions, we can work through a practice FRQ, which is 2019. So, I see there's a few questions, so... Let's go, answer a few.
Yep, so Emily, if you want to get started with the first question, or it's up to you.
Okay, um... Can we do a basic run-through of equilibrium concepts? Sure. Let's start, okay. Um... Dylan, do you want to start this first?
Yeah, sure. So with equilibrium, the whole idea is the idea of a reversible reaction, right? You have a reaction that can go forward, but then, at the same time, the opposite reaction can occur. And what we do with equilibrium is we essentially can calculate how our forwards will a reaction go. Will it go pretty much all the way forwards and we're going to have mostly products? Or is it going to go all the, you know, is it really not going to go forward that much and are we going to have mostly reactants at the end? And the way we describe how equilibrium works is through an equilibrium constant, right? And with an equilibrium constant, it's unique for every reaction, right? And the way it generally works is that it is the... You take the concentration of the products raised to their stoichiometric coefficients and divide by the concentration of the reactants raised to their stoichiometric coefficients. And that is that equilibrium, the equilibrium concentrations. And this constant is important because the fact that it tells us how far forwards a reaction is actually going to take us. If we have an equilibrium constant of something like, you know, 1.5 times 10 to the minus 8, this reaction isn't going to go forward at all. But if we have an equilibrium constant of 10, this is a reaction where we have 10 times as many products as we do reactants. And so that's a really important, that's kind of the major thing that you have to know about equilibrium, right? The whole idea that at equilibrium, the rate of the forward reaction is equal to the rate of the reverse reaction, right? And then, you'll also learn a lot about basically what affects equilibrium. So here, I'm going to pull up the CED because I know things have changed since I took the course. So let me just pull that up so I can make sure to actually tell you guys what's going to be tested on the exam, since I know that's more important than ever. Give me one second. There you go. Alright, so, when we're dealing with equilibrium, not only can we calculate equilibrium constants, but we can also look at if we change things in this reaction, how will that shift the proportion of reactive products to the left and the right? And we can do this via what's called the Chatelier's Principle, right? And it basically tells us that if we increase the concentration of reactants or products on either side, it can shift the reaction by changing what's called the reaction quotient. And what the reaction quotient tells us is essentially how close are we to equilibrium, right? If, well, the reaction quotient is labeled as Q, right? If Q is less than or greater than K, it means that we've either gone too far, or we're not at equilibrium yet. And that's the way the reaction will actually shift. And by implementing things like if you were to, at equilibrium, dump in a bunch of product, right? Now you've boosted up that Q value by increasing the concentration of products. Therefore, Q will become greater than K, and you'll shift your reaction essentially to the left. You'll start going backwards and creating reactants to resume that equilibrium constant, right? Because that constant is a constant for any reaction, regardless of your starting conditions, it will make its way to that equilibrium. It's almost like if you have a seesaw and you throw on a bunch of weight onto one side, it'll still eventually, right? It will still balance itself out eventually, right? That's really what you want to know about equilibrium, basically. There's also a lot of other types of problems with equilibrium, things like ice tables and finding equilibrium concentrations, which we can go over later if someone asks about it. But yeah, that's kind of the general rundown of what equilibrium is about. Obviously, there's intricacies, but that's, yeah, the general layout. So yeah.
Someone else also asked about what's the difference between KC, KSP, and QSP and QC? So that was just mentioned, like, what Dylan had in there. So like, for example, you have KSP, that's like the current state of the solution. And then, for KC, that's the equilibrium constant, if I'm not wrong. And then, you have KSP, which is the, um... Hold up. The, I'm forgetting, hold up.
KSP is, so anytime you see a capital K, note that it's a capital K, not a lowercase k, because a lowercase k is typically a rate constant. But if you see a capital K, whether it is a KA, KB, KC, KSP, those subscripts just describe what type of reaction we're talking about. So a KA, a KB, a KSP, they all describe the same thing. How far forward does a reaction actually go? When we're looking at the difference between a KC and a KSP, they're the same concept. The only difference is that when we say KSP, we're referring to a solubility equilibrium. So essentially, how much will something dissolve? Because realistically speaking, so this solution is just a matter of a chemical reaction, right? How far forward does this reaction go where we are ripping apart a solid into its constituent ions? So with something like sodium chloride, that will have a very high KSP, that reaction. However, something like, I'm trying to think of, you know, something like silver chloride, that will have a very small KSP, because it is not going to dissolve a lot. If anything, it's going to be incredibly small because we consider it insoluble in water. So that's the only difference. It's simply, it's a notational thing. KC is generic, KSP has to do with solubility equilibrium. KA, KB, that's acid-base, that's not in your exam. And then again, KW, that's a constant, but again, you don't have to worry about that. So it's a matter of notation. There is technically, mathematically, there's no difference. It's all equilibrium constants. Q, Q is what describes where we are now. So if we're not at equilibrium, we can calculate the reaction quotient, and it will tell us basically, are we going to equilibrium? Are we past equilibrium, or are we at equilibrium? If Q equals K, our equilibrium concentrations are our... are our reaction quotient, and it matters with the left and the right. If you want to take the next question, you can feel free to.
Yeah, sure. I'll just quickly go over, someone said, "How strict is grading the SIGFigs?" College Board usually, with the SIGFigs, you're allowed to have a one-digit error. So like, you can go left or right one, and you will still get the question right, so don't worry about that. And then someone said, "Can we go over assigning oxidation numbers?" So there's a few rules for oxidation numbers. Remember that in atom, in elemental form, that's always zero for the oxidation numbers. And then, when you have, it's a monatomic ion, so there's only, it's just the charge of the ion. So, you know, the periodic table, based on how off the sides, you'll figure out the charge for the monatomic ion. And then, for all group 1A metals, they're all positive 1, unless obviously the elemental form. And then, for all the group 2A metals, they're all positive 2, unless, of course, it's the elemental state. So hydrogen is either positive 1 or negative 1. So it's positive 1 when it's with a non-metal, because it's to fill in the gap, right? And then, it's negative 1 when it's bound to a metal. And then, oxygen is negative 1 in any peroxides, right? But that's pretty uncommon. Usually, oxygen will be negative 2 in most compounds, so...
It's a pretty safe, yeah. It's a pretty safe bet that oxygen will have a... It's pretty safe to say oxygen will have an oxidation state of negative 2 in most compounds.
Yeah, yeah. And then fluorine is always negative 1. I think that one's self-explanatory. And then, remember that the sum of all the oxidation numbers in a compound, well, as long as it's neutral, should be zero, so make sure you do the calculations, right? And then, all the sum for all the oxidation numbers for a polatomic ion, it's also the charge of the ion. So that's the basic few rules of to find your oxidation numbers, so...
Yeah. Thanks.
The next person asked, "Can you outline the question types that we would need to use an ice table for?" Um... Usually, you use an ice table for whenever... Okay, how exactly do you explain this? Do we have any examples? Use it when you're using equilibrium, changing like concentrations, right? Because, you know what I stands for, right? You have, you have the initial state, right? And then you have the change in the state, the parts of the equation, and then you have equilibrium state. So what you're trying to find is usually that equilibrium state. Is there any examples you give for that?
If, if we have a reaction, say, right, let's say we have... I can only think of it with acid-base equilibrium, because that's just what I know.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess that is still just equilibrium. Essentially, you want to use an ice table whenever you are dealing with finding an equilibrium concentration. So if you have a reaction, say, here, let's do like a KSP one, right? If we have something like silver chloride being dissociated into silver plus and Cl minus, right? We are going to have some starting concentrations, right? Typically, it'll be something like, you know, 2 molar silver chloride, 0 molar and 0 molar for the products. Because before the reaction starts, obviously, there's been no reaction, right? And we're given our KSP or our K-value in general. And basically, the whole idea is that we are going to lose reactants and gain products. But we don't know what that is, so we call it X. And then we know that our ending concentrations are going to be, whatever our initial concentration is, minus X, and then our ending concentrations, or the initial concentrations for the products, plus X. So it's essentially, then you can set up an algebraic expression using the K-value that you have to find your equilibrium concentrations. And an ice table is simply a really easy and nice way to set that whole thing up. Initial change equilibrium.
Okay. So someone said, "What would you recommend we do leading up to the exam this week?" Well, I think it'd be a good idea to obviously review any units that you think you might have some trouble, or any units that you learned earlier on, because it's a building block base for chem, but I think sometimes you tend to have a little forgetting in the beginning part, so review the beginning units. And then you can build that way up in like the same way you learned it, or whatever parts you think you might need to review, because you're not quite sure. And then do practice FRQs from previous exams, because College Board always offers those up for every exam.
Yeah, and then, when you're studying, because especially, it's pretty much crunch time now leading up to this exam, you want to make sure you can target, you know, if you've seen me talking about how to study for AP exams, I say the same thing every time. You want to study what you don't get, right? So if you are really bad, let's say, with bonding and Vesper, right? That is something that you, over this next few weeks, can really go in-depth into, especially if you're good at most other things. If it's generally the whole course that you're not great at, you can do a general review using things like Crash Course. Obviously, Fiveable has all of our resources, and any other resources that work for you. However, you want to be able to study what you know that you are weakest in. Because if you know that you're fantastic, yeah, thank you for putting on the chat. If you are really bad, let's say, at kinetics, but you're really good at ideal gas law, it's no use to you to be studying the ideal gas law. Even though it's easy, it is not going to help you in the long run on the exam. So yeah, that would be my key advice.
And I would say, practice as much as you can every day, but the day before the exam, get a really good rest. I would suggest going to bed pretty early, even though the exam's shorter and it's, I don't know your time zones, and it's usually, but it's usually later than it would be. Just make sure you get your rest, very important.
Yeah, for sure. Don't cram.
Someone said, "What would you suggest we write down on our notes, since it's open note?" Include any areas that you might be a little iffy, like we said, when you're reviewing. And do, on your notes, it'd be nice if you could have an example of a problem, because then just having equations might not be as helpful as having us giving you a question, and you can see how to use the equation into there.
I know for me personally, I, I actually don't like open note things, it just doesn't work for me. So I'm not, like, if I was taking these...
I'm going back and forth, so you gotta know what you know.
If, like, these open notes is not going to be the difference between a 2 and a 5. It might be the difference between like one point, which could be the difference between like a 3 or a 4. However, you do not want to become overly confident on your notes. You don't want to become too overly reliant, because if you're looking at your notes every 10 seconds to get information, then you're not going to be able to have the time to actually answer your questions. And so, you know, you could be reading these notes and know exactly how to tackle these questions, but if you look back up and there's 10 minutes left for question 1, you know, you got to get moving. So that's my only problem with open note, that I can see a lot of students are going to get really over-reliant and have these giant cram packets, and that simply is not going to help.
Because, remember, the time limit, it's going to feel really crunched up. And I would suggest having your own timer set on your phone or something, because College Board has their timer. But usually, you want to have two windows open, or if you're handwriting it, have your own timer, just because then you can keep track of different times. Maybe do like 5-minute intervals to just to get yourself there, so you know where you are and how much time you have left. And it's okay if you don't finish the whole thing, because they said there's obviously more ways to earn points. But just make sure you keep track of your time.
Yeah. And in terms of writing your answers, when you are writing your answers, put something down, because a lot of these questions are two or three pointers, where you will get a point just for writing down a formula or setup, right? There's usually a lot of setup points on this exam. So even if you don't get the right numerical answer, let's say you plug into your calculator wrong, you set up with the wrong numbers, whatever it is. If you have the correct setup for the problem, where you have your variables on place, or they can see, okay, they definitely knew something of how to do this, you can score one or two points, or one point, you know, a setup point, or a setup point, maybe an extra point. And that could, again, that's one, every point counts on these exams. And so it could, you know, you want to put something down, because if you don't put anything down, you're not going to get any points, obviously.
So, someone else asked, "Do you recommend writing or keyboarding answers?" Well, I think usually, since chem is like, you're used in class, you don't usually do a lot of typing. I think, just for me personally, I would prefer writing it out, because it's easier to write in equations, and you can get that done quickly there, rather than trying to figure out how to type that. Because, like Dylan said, sometimes just writing the equations gives you point. And if someone cannot understand your process of how you got certain answers, that also might be like a factor. So you always want to write down your equations before you use them, so that whoever's grading your thing can see your thought process. So, I personally, because since, most people write, handwrite it all year, I think it'd be a great idea if you write it, and then just take a photo and upload it, and you'll be good.
Yeah. I have to agree here. With more STEM-based exams, I would probably recommend handwriting. Unless you are someone who you can type out equations, and you are so comfortable with that you could actually write it faster, or type it faster than you could write it, you know, you're not going to be having to write out a lot of like chemical equations, but yeah. If we can use our tablet, I see your question, I, I don't see why not, oh no? I don't, I wouldn't see why not, but I guess...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, you'd have to check the formats, because I know you can do the AP exam demo, they have plenty of those, and you can see if that would be able to be turned in.
Oh, wait, if you mean, I was gonna say, if you mean writing it in a separate, like, on the same device, I don't know, because I don't know if they'll let you leave the mobile, like, browser or whatever.
Oh.
I would probably err against it, just because...
That's, that's fair. I mean, what I'm probably going to do for anything handwritten, I'm, I have a Mac, so I'm just going to take a photo with my phone and then airdrop it to my computer. So if you can figure out a quick way to get your photos in, so, that's that. Yeah, and then, yeah, I think so. So someone said, "The sample questions that College Board released had sections, questions A through J for the 25-minute question." Well, I mean, since College Board released it, it's, I think it's more likely than not that they would do that. Usually, for any chem FRQs, they do tend to have a lot of parts, but some parts can be really quick, and they're like a simple one-to-two sentence answer, or really quick equation. So don't stress about it. I'm not sure if they would do it for the 25-minute part, they might do it for the... Hold up. What parts are there? It's 25 minutes plus another 15 minutes, right?
Yes, plus 5 minutes at the end for submission.
Right, right. So I guess they might do it for the 25-minute part, they might have a few less, but usually, some of the parts are pretty quick, so don't worry about it. And like I said, you don't have to get all the points in order to get a good score. Okay. Is there any more questions?
Maybe we could just talk about like what our experience taking the exam was like, and kind of how we navigated through. Because when we took it, obviously, we had the multiple choice and like seven free response questions. And so yeah, if you maybe want to talk about, what was it like when you took the exam in terms of, were you stressed? Were you, did you have a good time? Although, what year did you take the test?
I took it last year, so 2019.
Okay.
So with that exam, I think, I'm just not, I'm going to skip past the multiple choice stuff. I'll just talk about the free response, because that's what you guys have. For the very first question, I believe they gave us A through, A through like J, or something like that, too.
It was a long question.
That question actually took quite a bit of time. But if you can, I think, just going through it, it was like, it felt pretty like eased up, because you were like, okay, I know what I'm doing. You know, if I don't know, I will just come back to it later, too, if that's like a thing. And I think I got through the first question in, like, I want to say 15, 20 minutes. Took, it took longer than the other questions, for sure. And you'll find sometimes it might be better to do any question that is shorter first, and then you can take time to spend on the longer questions. It was only like around halfway point, where I was like, okay, I'm like halfway through the exam, and it's been like half of the time, so I need to like, you know. If you can do it quicker and go back and review, that's always something I want to suggest, because sometimes you make silly mistakes and you don't realize it because of the time crunch. It gets to the last question, or last two questions, that you might start feeling a little stressed with the time limit, but don't worry, you'll do fine. You'll have, you have time, you can do it. And, yeah, and the last question last year anyways, it was a lot shorter than the other ones. It was only A and B, so it was like, oh my God, I have another question. Oh, it's a lot shorter, there's only, the last one, I'm pretty sure we only had to explain exactly what we saw in the experiment that was given on the paper. So that was pretty smooth sailing. What about you?
For me, okay, my exam experience was a lot. So I got through the first two questions relatively easily. They were, you know, obviously, difficult questions, but I got through them, I knew what I was doing. And then I got to question 3, and if anyone here has taken the 2019 FRQ, number 3 was like, oh, it was terrible. I, the latter half of question 3 was all this like really complicated acid-base equilibrium stuff. And I just, I freaked out. And so I skipped it and moved on to question 4. Question 4, because I'd been psyched out, I forgot the combined gas law, and so I ended up deriving it on the exam and wasting time. Question, I like screwed up at every question from that point on. Question 5, I got the question right, by the way, so I got it, I'll take it. Question 5, I get to it, and it was the photo-electron spectroscopy one, or spectrophotometry, whatever it is. And I, they had us calculate a wavelength using like E equals lambda nu, whatever it was. And I ended up getting an answer where the wavelength was larger than the observable universe, so I got that one wrong. I redid it and I got the correct answer, but it was like, I was just mistake after mistake after mistake. And by the time I got to question 7, I was just like a war-torn, like, I was a mess. So don't be like me, you know, keep your cool. I didn't finish that question 3. Also, the second half, all I wrote for one question was like, the student can use the KB, and that was my whole answer. So obviously, there's room for error. You don't forget 100 on this test to do well, but yeah.
Yeah. So like the question Dylan was talking about, it was, it was like, identify a laboratory method that's not titration, that the student could use to collect data to determine a certain compound in the solution. It was actually hydroxide, I think. So that was, that was that. And so, I know usually, we were used to using titration. And then, when they were like, not titration, everyone, I know that from like online, when you go and like, don't do it, but like people post things, don't do it yourself. You can see everyone was freaking out. But for that one, for example, like, I think I put, use like a pH strip thing.
That was the correct answer, yeah.
Yeah.
I ended up freaking out when I saw that question, because you know when you read a question, you get kind of halfway through it, and you start like thinking of an answer like halfway through the question? I just saw, I saw observant laboratory method and concentration, and so I go, oh, titration. And just like my, I went from like here to just and got destroyed. And also, I know we're kind of just having an open discussion here, but if anyone has any other questions about content, the exam, anything, feel free to drop them in the Ask a Question box. But yeah, I got to that point, and I wrote down spectrophotometry, just because that was the only thing I could think of. It was not the correct answer, but, but yeah. That was, yeah. That question specifically was something that got so many people, because you just, you don't think about that. We are talking about AP Chemistry. We're doing an AP Chem Q&amp;A. So if you have any questions about chemistry, obviously, feel free to drop it to us.
Okay. Someone says, "Do we have to know the Haber process?" I feel like I have to, I need to make sure which, which sections are not, okay, so 8 and 9 are excluded, right?
Yeah. But with the, so the Haber process is a process by which you take nitrogen and hydrogen, and it's some sort of reaction, and you can create ammonia. You don't have to know it. You might see it on the exam as like a question, but you don't have to know it specifically as the Haber process or anything.
Usually, whenever they give you any equation, they'll tell you the details behind it. You won't have to like hear a proper name and be like, oh, I know what that is immediately.
Yeah, the whole idea of the Haber process is it basically runs hydrogen gas and nitrogen gas through a catalyst, and it reacts to form ammonia. So it's not the most complicated lab setup, but you don't have to know it. Because you won't get a question like, "Describe the Haber process," whatever.
Okay, someone said, "Can you go over the lab/experiment steps and reasons for the errors that can arise?" Okay. So... Was there any, do they have any questions that you have to explain the lab process?
They, they'll ask you, they won't ask you to design a lab necessarily, but they can ask you. So like, there's a question, there's a question on our exam last year where, you know, they might say, for example, a student was looking at the solution but found it to be contaminated, but went ahead anyway. Would their results be greater than, less than, or equal to the the calculated value? And you'd have to understand what that error will do to your results. You most likely would not have to design a lab, but you might have to interpret lab results and look at errors. And then knowing how to calculate percent error is also an important thing. But that's...
That's for sure. Yeah, I don't think, usually they'll ask you with the different parts for questions, they usually do it so that to break everything down, so you can just go follow the steps without having to do anything with your own. So they won't give you like data and be like, hey, design this. Um, so they won't give you like data and be like, hey, design this experiment, so. Someone said any, any predictions for the test? I don't really, I'm not sure, to be completely honest, for anything. Because.
Yeah, I don't really have any predictions, I, I mean, I always do this every year cuz I just think about it. Chemistry is interesting though, because like they'll ask questions and it'll cover like six units in one question. So they could definitely cover all the material on this exam and two free response questions, pretty easily, actually. I would probably guess there, one is going to be more lab based, so you'll have like a little picture of a lab. And then obviously, you'll have to answer questions and calculate things. But AP chem is such an interesting exam because it's all application. Like they'll never ask you to define something, even on the normal exam, they never ask you to define.
Yeah, they always. To make you, make sure you know your content, they'll always give you stuff so that you have to explain.
They'll they'll never ask, just like, what's the definition of entropy? No, they'll say calculate the entropy of reaction for this reaction, cuz that's really what you need to know how to do.
Okay, someone said, what's a good str- attack strategy for questions you have no idea how to answer, aside from skipping it? I mean, if you, oh my god, if you the time, I would say um break down like a question as as much as you can. And then do different, do the parts that you know, and that can help. Sometimes, as well, you said aside from skipping it, but sometimes if you go forward, there might be another part that touches on something. That might give you a refresher, or if you go back to it, you can always have like a. Um, you know, like a light bulb go off, so that's that. Um, I guess you would just split it up to as much as you know, because there are lots of points to be answered just from putting the equation. Or anything that might be um necessary, so.
Let's see.
Someone said, are there any math questions we should focus on? Like icebox, if they say no calculator is needed. I'm assuming that they're probably gonna choose um nice numbers to go with, like, like really nice numbers. Generally, probably like whole numbers or things like that, um integer numbers.
Yeah, do you mind if I? Do you mind if I share my screen for something, just to show something?
Oh, go, go for it.
Yeah, I just, I figured like I, there's a trick with iceboxes that's pretty easy that a lot of people aren't super aware of. So if we have an icebox, right? And we have some reaction, right, let's just say it's like A plus B yielding C plus D, right? This is just an arbitrary reaction. Let's say we have, you know, initial concentrations of one molar here and zero molar here. We know that with the reactants, we're going to be losing X, and with the products, we're going to be gaining X, right? And so then we have one minus X, one minus X, X, and X. So when we set up our equation, we know that KC is equal to X times X, which is X squared. All over one minus X. Squared, right, one minus X times one minus X. The trick comes in when we look at this X right here. So we know that if we have a super small KC, right? This number here is going to be way less than one, right? Because the fact that this is going to be a very, very small fraction, um, and it's not going to be negative too. So we know that this is, we can say that X is much less than one, okay? So we can approximate this to just be X squared over one squared. Which is an easy trick for just being able to clean up, so we don't have to do any weird quadratic formula stuff or anything of that sort. You'll see this trick even, they even say something like this on, in their scoring guidelines. It's a really easy trick and it's really effective, and it's technically mathematically pretty correct, you'll get a pretty significant answer. So yeah, that's an easy way of tricking, yeah.
Do you want us to go then?
Yeah, sure, um, so X is much less than one, because when we're looking at equilibrium, right? There's a five percent rule, typically, you can just assume that when you have a very small, like Casey's, if you use something of like ten to the minus ten. Is generally going to be pretty equivalent, however, um. We know that X is much less than one, because if the reaction isn't going forward all that much, right? We aren't going to get that many products, and therefore that plus X is gonna be really, 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 really tiny, so that is why we can assume. And if you look up examples, there's, yeah. And yeah, that could be something that you have to justify in terms of why can you make that assumption, so that's definitely.
Anything open ended.
You can always go ahead and solve the quadratic normally, and you'll get technically the correct answer. It just takes more time and more effort and, you know, we're AP students, we don't like putting in effort.
So it was a simple way, cuz time crunch.
Yeah, time management.
Does anyone else have any questions? Or do we wanna go through a practice FRQ? From last year's test?
Alright, we'll just wait a few minutes, see what people think if they wanna see an FRQ or have any more questions. And obviously, if we go over an FRQ, that doesn't bar you from asking questions, so.
Keep asking questions, we'll come back to it after.
So yeah, how about we, yeah, so how we pull up our queue and get going? Excuse me, sorry.
Okay, so we're gonna go, can you see the slides?
Yeah, if you just on Crowdcast, if you hover over your screen, you can maximize it, there you go.
Okay, whoa, okay, so um, we're gonna go over question four from last year's two thousand nineteen. Uh, uh, free response question, so a student is doing experiments with CO2 um in gas form. Originally, a sample of the gas is in a rigid container at two hundred ninety nine Kelvin and point seven ATM. The student increases the temperature of this um carbon dioxide in the container to four hundred twenty five Kelvin. So, um, the first um part is describe the effect of raising the temperature on the motion of CO2 molecules. Do we let them um first try it out?
If you guys wanna take a minute, this question is one that you could probably write out two, two or three sentences, so it shouldn't take more than, you know, a minute to answer. So right, yeah, just write down anything you think in terms of how will raising the temperature change the motion of those carbon dioxide molecules? Matthew, higher average kinetic energy, more collisions. Remember, we're not talking about kinetics here, we're talking about gases. So while you'll probably see more collisions between gas molecules, they aren't gonna be reacting. And so we're just worried about the motion, so you were definitely on the right track with the higher average kinetic energy. See, I'll see what anyone else says. Let me pull up the scoring guidelines for this one, so I can keep checking them.
Does any, is everyone done or I'll do this, so I can see the chat? We'll wait a few more, um, a little longer to see.
Do you have on the slide, do you have the scoring guidelines or is it like your own answers or?
Um, yeah, but I checked the answers against the scoring guidelines. Each one of these parts is worth one point, by the way.
I wasn't done that they weren't correct, I was just, I was curious.
Oh, yeah, no, it's fine. Someone said move faster with great force, more energy. Think about the fact that it's in the container.
I think Rosemary gave a pretty perfect answer with that one. Lee's on the right track with one of these parts about pressure. Not this, uh, with, with part A, we don't really worry about higher pressure. But if you look at the full question, there is going to be a question asking about pressure, so you're definitely on the right track of thinking, and it's good that you're thinking in that direction.
Yeah, just remember, it's gas, increase the temperature, it's a solid container. Okay. Is anyone else gonna hop in or?
I think we're good.
Okay, so I'll just go over what I put. So the average speed of the molecules increases as temperature increases, so. Yeah.
Right.
I was just on the container with another question, sorry, sorry.
No, no worries, no worries. Yeah, pretty much what everyone else said in terms of there being, right, more um, more energy, higher kinetic energy. Anything that involves the speed of the molecules, um, you'll probably get the point as long, right?
Right, okay, do we wanna move on to the next part of the question? Is everyone good? Okay, I'll just move on to the next part. So B is calculate the pressure of the gas in the um, the CO2 gas in the container at four hundred twenty five Kelvin. Give you guys a bit of time to go through that.
Um, and for Vanessa who asked, does it have to be a full question, a full sentence? I would recommend so, because these questions typically require some explanation. So the full sentence is definitely warranted, especially with a question like this. However, technically, there's nothing in the rules that say you must write a full sentence, but it definitely will help.
And if you look at the examples that college board posts for like um student responses to the FRQ. Generally, um, for all the ones I've seen, they've been full sentences, so it doesn't really hurt to write a full sentence. Okay, has anyone responded?
Point nine nine atmospheres, okay. No, I'm saying, this is the question I was talking about earlier where I forgot about the combined gas law. And I ended up basically deriving it myself by assuming a one mole sample, which was, it actually worked just scarily effectively. But I remember looking at the scoring guidelines and just being like, oh my god, the combined gas law, and like hitting myself, cuz if I screwed that up. But then I did the calculation and I, you should have seen me just scream when I got the same answer, cuz I was so excited.
So in my answer, I put the original um ideal gas law to show how you can get the combined gas law, if you wanna do that. But I I directly usually just go from the combined gas law, cuz it's, it's there, it's an option. But um, is everyone good or should we wait a little longer? Let's wait a little longer.
Alright. Yeah, I think we kinda gave a good hint when saying that you should probably be using the combined gas law for this question. Rosemary, no worries, take your time.
Don't worry, oop, oopsies. Okay, someone else got point nine nine, seems like the, okay. Three people.
Right, I think we're good to, to share, Brian, the answer is point nine nine atmospheres. By the way, so those of you who got that answer, yeah, good job.
So, remember, like, we literally just mentioned combined gas law, because the molecules and the volume stays the same. The only thing that will change is the pressure and the temperature, right? So you can, um, if you see Pivner, you remember, you don't have to have that part, because combined gas law. Um, so just remember the ratio, so it's P one divided by T one equals, you know, P two divided by P T two. Um, and then you just plug in everything that you need to plug in um to solve for P two, and then cross multiply. And then that's where you get point nine nine atmospheres. Okay.
So these two parts. Think we're okay for now, if you guys have any questions about this question, obviously, feel free to drop them. I think this question is a generally pretty easy question, in my opinion, cuz it, I think a lot of students have an okay time with gas laws. Especially with the ideal gas law and combined gas law, cuz they're generally, I mean, so far, it's been kinda just plugging in numbers and stuff. And this question generally, and by me, this was one of the easiest, about the easiest FRQ of that exam, but yeah, I I say having screwed it up.
Okay, okay, um, so let's move on to. So the third part of the question was, in terms of kinetic molecular theory, briefly explain why the pressure of the CO2 in the container changes as it is heated to four hundred twenty five K Kelvin. This is when I should have mentioned, remember, it's a rigid container.
Rigid containers.
Oh, yeah. Remember, your units, units are very important, they, I'm pretty sure they will deduct points or not give you a point, right? If you don't have the right units. I apologize if you see, I'm trying to look at the chat at the same time with the slides. Okay, someone said the particles collide with each other in the container more often, and with more force, thus higher pressure.
Been good a few more minutes, see if anyone else has any other answers, any other ideas?
Because the volume is unchanging in the container, the increase in speed of the particles makes them collide with each other. And with the walls of the container with more force, thus increasing the pressure.
Yeah, that, I, that was like the perfect answer right there, like.
Whoa, that was very um solid.
Yeah, that was a really good answer, that's. Lee, I'd probably say no, because. Because of the fact that we can assume, according to the, uh, according to an ideal gas and the kinetic molecular theory. We can assume that all, um, we we can generally assume that particles are of a negligible size. Um, the collisions of particles wouldn't have a large effect of on pressure, especially because faster particles, if anything. This, the main thing in this question is that they will be hitting the walls more. However, an alternate explanation could be. Right, it's either more frequently or harder against the walls. But it has to do with them, that's actually what pressure is, according to the molecular, kinetic molecular theory, just particles bumping on the wall.
Okay, do we, is there anyone else that wants to answer or how about we just go directly to? Okay. I guess I'll just go with what I wrote for this um question. So, um, I said that since the average speed of the molecules increased, because the temperature increased. The gas particles that travel faster will collide more frequently with the sides of the rigid container, causing the pressure to increase. So basically, just like Rosemary.
Yeah, I think Rosemary's is, I mean, everyone, most other peoples would get the point, because you really only have to read a sentence, but that was like the, the perfect.
Very thorough, very thorough.
Well, Rosemary, you actually, you cut, you did both alternate explanations, since you did both, it'll be more frequent and harder force. Which is, which is not a bad thing, it's, it's a good thing.
Sometimes, if you write just a little more, it helps.
But don't go off on paragraphs.
Oh, yeah, also, you gotta balance your time. Okay, I guess we'll move on to the next part, so this is the last part of um this question. So the student measures the actual pressure of the CO2 gas in the container at four hundred twenty five Kelvin. And observes that is less than the pressure predicted by the ideal gas law, so explain this observation. We'll give you guys a little bit to do this.
Right, this.
I go gas law is ideal.
Right, this is a question that brings up the exceptions to the ideal gas law.
I'm pretty sure for question, there were two, two things you could have written, right?
They only list one, so. I'm sure there are alter- alternates, you know, cuz. I'm sure there are alter, alternates, you know, because I'm sure there's some kid who is like three credits away from his bachelor's in this in high school and wrote down some super complicated answer. But there is typically one answer that kind of goes with it. Basically, why, it's basically asking, why is it that observed pressures would be less? You know, than calculated with the ideal gas law? Why is that?
Because you have to remember what the ideal gas law actually ign- ignores when it was written. So someone said attractive forces, okay, that's good. Another person said attractive forces. Yay, you guys are all in the same direction.
Collisions are, oh, that's an interesting question. I mean, interesting, collisions aren't perfectly elastic. I, hmm.
That's actually interesting.
Is that valid? I, that's not the answer that the college board gave. The college board says that it would be less because, um, particles are attracted to each other. So for Matthew and, and Isa or Isa, that's what you would want. But collisions aren't perfectly elastic. I mean, yeah, technically, they will be losing a little bit of energy. It won't be crazy, but I mean, technically, that's an explanation. I
That's actually very fair.
That's, that's pretty fair. I don't know if I give that the point solely because the, the college board didn't say that explicitly. But that's
Right.
You're definitely thinking, and I, I like that. I definitely would never have thought of that. That's a
Good job. Also, um, isn't like the ideal gas law gets more inaccurate with higher temperatures and unpredictable, right?
It's, um, lower temperatures, higher pressures.
Oops.
No, you're good. It's just, yeah, because at low temperatures, the, uh, intermolecular forces start to take effect. And at high pressures, meaning low volumes, the, um, the particles start to take up space.
Yeah. Since the natural pressure is less like, is likely less than the assumes that the gases are ideal gases, no interregula, okay, okay, I'll just go with what the co, basically, um, Dylan already said what college board did, but basically you have the intermolecular forces of attraction, right, between the molecules? So the attraction causes the molecules to collide with the walls less frequently or less rapidly. Like the speed, you know, because of the attraction. So that's that. So good job to all of you guys. Who put that?
Yeah, these are some great answers that I see. So I'm gonna have to like, I'm gonna probably email my chem teacher later and be like, would this be a valid question, answer this question? Because that's that's an interesting thought collision, because that's kind of the one part that we always tend to forget about the kinetic molecular theory, but technically they assume that collisions are always perfectly that, you know, and energy is conserved.
If you think about it, like in chem and in like other sciences like physics and things like that, um, they tend to be, um, ideal in every situation that they have, obviously, because
Yeah. In most normal situations, oh, sorry.
Sorry, you can go.
In most normal situations, the ideal gas law, like if you were doing a real experiment and you were at a normal temperature, normal pressure, normal, you know, normal conditions, the ideal gas law give you pretty accurate results. Technically, not completely. Um, and then if you look up the van der Waals equation, you don't need to know it for the exam, but if you're interested, that is an equation that corrects for the ideal gas law.
Right. I think we had to learn that in my chem class last year.
Yeah, we definitely learned it. It's not on the exam, at least not explicitly. They won't ask you to use calculations with it. But it's, it's there. It exists.
I feel like is the next slide the last slide?
I think so, yeah. So I think we're coming up on our last five minutes.
I will do, I'll switch back to questions, actually. So let's do
Next.
Do some more questions, or?
Yeah, we can go fill out the hour. Yeah. Why not?
Okay. So we have a question. Oh, someone just said, how do I get, oh, it's five hour, okay.
Yeah.
And we already answered, so.
So if anyone has any more questions about, excuse me, the exam or, um, any content, obviously, you know? We can use these last five, six minutes to go over that.
Yes, is electrochem going to be on the exam this year? Um, no, because it's, I'm pretty sure it's the last unit you learn. And so college board's getting rid of the last bits. So you, you should not expect electrochem.
Yeah, no, you shouldn't accept, uh, expect anything regarding, in terms of that unit, you will not be, entropy gives free energy, uh, reduction potentials, galvanic cells. Uh, God, I hated all that. I loved all of it, but I hated having to learn it. You shouldn't be expecting things like, um, like buffers and acid based stuff.
Yeah.
Or we're looking at thermo, you should not be, yeah, don't be expecting gives free energy. Don't be looking for like electrolysis, cell protection. You don't need it. There's no entropy. No.
No entropy. Yeah, that was a fun unit, but, um, yeah, buffers were also quite tricky to get a grasp on in the beginning, not gonna lie.
Yeah, typically, you, you understand entropy first. That will be on the exam. You will be seeing calorimetry, enthalpy, uh, endothermic and exothermic, stuff like that, yes. But you will, it will all be related to heat.
Someone said, what other equations aren't being tested on the exam? I think that's sort of like a hard, um, question. You should ask what equations are on the exam.
Or the, I'll pop the equation sheet.
Yeah. So just how to use all the equations on the equation sheet that's being covered, obviously, except for the last two units. Um, and then I don't, is that, I know the ideal gas law is on there. I don't know if the, um, combined ones are on there, but
Right, so you will need to know, um, all the atomic structure stuff. So E equals H nu, C equals lambda nu. You need to know, um, the formulas for KC and KP, which are just partial pressures and concentrations. You need to know like ideal gas law, Dalton's law, partial pressures, mole fractions, um, some other little formulas like how to convert from Kelvin to Celsius, but that's something that you should know. Right, combined gas law, you should know, and you can write that down now. Q equals MC delta T.
Any any derived equations that might not be on the sheet, um, you now have the option to write them down on the sheet or like another piece of paper now. So that's always good if you don't, um, to have like each derived equation.
Yeah, that, and that kind of goes like, the two that I always remember are the combined gas law and M one V one equals M two V two. Those two aren't on your exam sheet, but they're implicitly known, so that you can definitely bring them up. So, yeah. And now you can write mine on the sheet.
Right, and for like, um, even with the question that we just went over, um, the FRQ, um, any parts that have, um, I'm losing my train of thought. I just lost my train of thought.
Um, I was gonna mention also, do not worry about memorizing constants. They give you everything you need. If there is a constant, they give it to you. Planck's constant, like
Also, remember, you're using the right constant with the right units.
Yeah, especially with R.
Especially R, yeah.
I've seen way too many people put eight point three one four on the ideal gas law. No, it's oh point oh eight, oh point oh eight oh six. Meter atmosphere, yeah. You do actually end up memorizing them just through usage, but it's not required. So, yeah.
But I always double check your units and whenever you're doing anything, units. Sometimes it's, it's, it's good as you're solving through it to have your units, just so that you don't mess up or like forget which part goes where, too.
Yeah.
Okay, um, someone said, are we taking chem in college?
I really hope not. I'm a major. I'm not, I'm backing away from that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of undecided, but I think I might have to take part of chem in college. We'll, we'll have to see.
All right.
I'm not looking forward to organic chemistry, that's for sure. I'm not much of a bio person, so. So we go over a
I love calorimetry. This is fun.
Yay, okay.
What was that? I'm on a live stream. I'm on a live stream. All right, man, I'll just walk in the room.
Okay. Since you love it, do you want to go over it?
Sorry, it's, it's, it's a pretty interesting uh, sorry about my mom, by the way, that was, that was funny. Um, let's see. There we go. Okay, so what calorimetry actually describes has to do with essentially, am I muted? I'm not muted, okay. Bring her on, ever teaches chem. Yeah, really, that'd be fun to watch. Anyways, so calorimetry basically has to do with measuring heat during a reaction. So when we are looking at calorimetry, right, we're, when you're looking at a calorimeter, we have what's called a coffee cup calorimeter. So you'll have this little, this is gonna be a very fun drawing. You guys have really fun, both through my drawing skills. You'll have this little coffee cup here, right? You'll have, um, a second coffee cup like that. And here's your reaction, right? Beautifully drawn. That is actually what a real reaction looks like in real life, folks. And then, um, and then you'll typically have a liquid, typically water, but it can technically be anything, right? So then you have water right here. And we can assume generally that all of the heat produced during this reaction is going to transfer to the water or vice versa. If there is a reaction that needs energy, the energy will be going into it. But let's just for now assume that we're dealing with a reaction that puts out energy, right, an exothermic reaction, okay? Yes. So we know, first of all, that our delta H is less than zero. Let's just assume that for now. Okay? So when we're looking at a, a, a reaction like this, we need to know a few things, right? So in order to calculate Q, the amount of heat that leaves or enters the system, we need to know the mass of the system. So in this case, the water, and sometimes you have to do the water plus the reaction. It depends on your, your situation. Times C, which is the, what's called the molder heat capacity. Or the, um, or the specific heat capacity, excuse me, the specific heat capacity of water or whatever liquid this is. It is essentially, um, it is essentially how much, um, how much energy you have, or how it is, what does it describe? It describes basically what you, how much, wait, one sec, my dog's barking. She's throwing off my whole train of thought. I'm sorry. Specific heat capacity, I'm sorry if you can hear my dog in the background. Specific heat capacity, yes, is the amount of energy required to raise the temperature of a substance one degree per one unit of mass. So like for water, it is four point one eight four gram per degree Celsius, I believe. I want to, that's what I want to say.
That's what I have memorized, so I'm assuming, I will, I will check.
Or it's, um, it's joules per gram, sorry.
Yeah, joules per gram.
Right. And so if you add, hey, if you have one gram of water and you input four point one eight four joules, you will raise it one degree Celsius. That's the whole idea. This actually is also the definition of one calorie, so fun fact. And then we have to know our change in temperature. Okay. So when we're looking at changes in temperature, we want this to be either in Celsius
Or Kelvin.
Or Kelvin. If it's in Fahrenheit, run for the hills. I, they're not going
Never use Fahrenheit.
They're not going to give you anything in Fahrenheit on the exam, but if they do, don't. The reason that we don't matter with C or K, uh, is because they're what are known as parallel scales, right? A change in one degree Celsius is, is the same as one degree Kelvin. It's just that they have different values, which is offset by two seventy-three.
Which is why the difference is same. But if you use Fahrenheit, if they give you Fahrenheit, but any chance, always convert it. Remember to always convert it.
So if we look at this as an example, okay, say our mass is ten grams of water, okay? We know that our C is four point one eight four joules per gram. And our delta T, let's suppose our delta T is fifteen degrees Celsius, okay? So we start at eighty-five and we end at Z, uh, a hundred, okay? Just as an example. They're going to give you this number and this number on the exam, or you'll have figured it out like earlier in the problem, but you will have these two orders of constants, so you have to know them. You'll actually be given most of the data for these types of questions. So if we look at our Q, right, Q is equal to then ten times four point one eight four times fifteen. And so we see whatever that will be, if I can grab, here we go. Luckily, I keep a calculator near me most times. Plug it into our calculator and we'll get an answer of ten times four point one eight four times fifteen. And that'll give us six hundred and twenty-seven point six joules.
But sig figs.
Sig figs, right? So we have, okay, let's say this was, let's say these were both fifteen point zero, just for the sake of it.
And ten point zero.
Ten point zero, yes.
Or else it'd be one sig fig.
Right, I just, I don't want to deal with six figs. Again, if you just wrote down this on the exam, they'll probably give it to you because it's plus or minus one. So I always kind of recommend rounding to the tenth or the hundredth. But if we're just talking strictly about calorimetry, that's how you would do it. And so let's say now they ask you, what is delta H, or what is our change in entropy? Well, when we're looking at the relationship between delta H and Q, right? If we're looking at Q, a positive Q would imply that heat is leaving the system, right? Because something is getting warmer from the reaction. So we actually know that delta H is negative Q. And that's because delta H describes not only the magnitude of heat, but also the direction that heat is traveling. That's not to call it a vector quantity, but that's physics. Um, basically, it says, first of all, which, which, uh, how much heat is flowing? So in this case, six hundred twenty-seven point six joules. And then is it going, is the system gaining energy, right? So this would imply a positive delta H. Or is it leaving the system? And that would be a negative delta H. In this case, delta H is positive for, or Q is positive. So delta H is equal to negative six hundred and twenty-seven point six joules. And that'll tell us that our reaction was exothermic. And you'll get similar result for an endothermic reaction, except you'll have a negative delta T.
And then, sorry, no, I, okay.
You good?
Yep.
All right, cool. That's, that's pretty much calorimetry right there. That's kind of all you need to know regarding it. There's also a thing called a bomb calorimeter, which isn't really important, but basically the only difference is you won't be given a mass. It's just Q equals C delta T. And that's for a bomb calorimeter.
Yeah.
But you don't really need to know that for the exam. It just might, it might come up, so I'm just gonna try to cover all on basis. But, yeah.
Okay.
So I think if
Questions? Or?
I think they, it's actually pretty interesting. A bomb calorimeter, I'll have a picture. Um, it essentially uses, they don't set off a bomb. But unlike a coffee cup calorimeter, they essentially have a reaction in a little thing, right, in a, an insulating jacket surrounded by water. There's a stir and a temperature. And you basically run ignition wires into this reaction and basically blow it up and see, all right, when we get this reaction going, how much heat does it react, release? It's the same concept, just a different method of doing so. The really main method is going to be coffee cup calorimeter.
That's sick.
It is pretty, it is pretty cool. Yeah, but these like lab processes are actually really interesting. And here, I'll drop a picture of, um, the difference. There you go. You wanna wrap things up?
Okay, sure. Um, so thank you guys all for coming to, hold up. Thank you guys all for coming to, um, this Q and A. Um, we appreciate all your questions. And we hope to see you guys at the, um, cram session next Wednesday at four PM to nine PM.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Bye, guys.
Good luck on your exams.
Oh, yeah, good luck. Oh, yeah, we're hosting the cram.